Welcome to the sixth annual Government Day of our community. Thank you all for coming. And this is the longest week we ever have. Let me just ask you also, if you would please sign a standing sheet on every table till one hour exactly in the museum, so they can tell you where it's called? You guys may take your seats. Let me introduce first, the committee that makes this together. They are awesome and they work so hard to keep this going every year. So we're gonna have a stand and remain standing and welcome back to that, okay? Commissioner Kelly, Mr. Kelly, as you please stand. Commissioner Marguerite, as I hear. Dave Fowler. Julie Smith, on the floor. Julie. Sherri Enger, as we hear. There she is, there's Sherri. Jesus Texas Center, Cameron Davidson, Randy Rieger. No? Okay. Carrie Good, our auditor, as I hear. Leanne Jennings, Georgia, by the way. Sandra Hannah, Representative, who we see here, there's Susan. Kaye Lull, our HR Director. And Stephanie McKee from also the Human Conference. Get everybody around her. We have several hospitals there. We miss Abu Beto. First, Mona. And sitting on the court of the Brown and Gillian. Christian Academy, sitting with the court of Nathan Shon. First, Christian High School, sitting with the court of Andrew Miller. Karen Carver, High School, who won. Anthony Almose. Alan Porter, who's on the floor. There they are. David Jalen Taylor, sitting with the court of Sam. And Holy Cross Academy, who's on the cross. There they are. Rachel King, we pray out. Sitting with the court of Selena Lima. County Children's School, sitting with the court of Paula Manca. Virginia Children's School, sitting with the court of Garrett Sarina. So you just got mentioned, Carrie. Dylan, it's about Dylan. Dylan, my word, sitting with the court. And last but not least, that goes to the hospital, Peter Moore, sitting with the court. Okay, so, Eddie, we have Chris Condit from Hillside First Church. He will say the words in the first stand with the congregation. And remain standing.
God, we love you and we're grateful for life, thankful for creation that you have placed this in. And I'm grateful for the way you created us, to be able to see the things that you've made and to be able to appreciate them. So grateful to live here in the Texas Panhandle and be able to enjoy probably the sunsets and the things that we're able to see here. God, grateful for the country, for the freedoms that we have, for the ability to lead and to govern, and grateful for leaders who are willing to do that, who are kind and servants and just willing to do what's best for them. So probably grateful for your wisdom, discernment, probably your knowledge for these leaders as they lead and guides and for, especially for people that got just in a meeting in such a way that the God that they know that it's not about themselves, but about the community and the people that they represent. God, grateful for these students who are here today and their interest in government and leadership. God, looking forward to seeing what today is for them and if it's beneficial for them and also in the future, maybe seeing some of them representing our elements in different various ways. God, be grateful for today's meeting, it may be fruitful, beneficial to our community. God, we get accomplished with things that we need to accomplish through these decisions that we've made that have been taken down and it's interesting to be grateful.
I pray that we can be just like God, the United States of America, and to the Lord who has hands, our nation, God, invisible, with the redeemed, just as we are. I pray that the Lord, the Lord of all, will save, and help, and heal.
We're gonna start, the I T department is gracious and giving us questions that in the past, the students have had. And we're gonna take a little bit of time, we're gonna answer some of those questions now. The court consists of five members, have judges, four commissioners, who are all paid salary for being here. I have full time, fully, they have not, and we'll be discussing this in just a second. We've got, sort of ongoing issues at the court. Okay, go to her. So, me and your students, okay, let's go. It's down, we stay with you. Julie, two minutes, you can't even park. Stephanie, it's your system, the commissioners all here. Carrie, I'm just, it's, it's on, purchasing agent. So these, we, this makes other commissioners more, so to speak, head of state, we can tell us if the rules of the law, Carrie sort of tells us the stops and ends. There's some cellists who need money, and Julie is in charge of taking down all everything that matters to us. So God, I have a job. So, with that said, Ms. Cal, would you explain to us how often the court meets?
Of course, we go, we go, supposedly twice a week, however.
Possibly.
Turn, turn it down a little bit, maybe a couple of meetings. I have to work twice a month, I have to, sometimes a month. To pay here or business side, pay people the salaries, I have to do that in meetings. And, right now, so, hopefully, we can, like, twice a week.
Ms. Marguerite, would you explain the difference between city government and county government, and also what I think is unique about Imerlo? You have two counties in one state. So you've got fire county, so you've got fire county, the officials for, then you've got regular county, and then you have the city of Imerlo. So today, our city is elected at what we call at large, which means you can live anywhere in the city and be elected on your city council. They have two-year terms, and they all run at the same time. So essentially, your city council will live 100%, so it could be all new people, which actually has happened in a very recent election. What's the difference about the county sides, we're elected in precincts, some people call those districts, but we're elected in precincts, which means you have to live in that area to put your name in the act, right, to run for election, and we have four-year terms. As Judge Tanner said, also, what's different is on the county side, we have a small stipend that pays our salary. On the city side, I think they get $10 of meeting, if I remember correctly. So very different, especially when you're looking at if one day you want to run for office, and what does that look like, right? Normally, you have to be in a position, if you have a job, that you have less will you, that you can leave your job and then go and govern, whatever that looks like through county and the city side. And then a question that I forget as well is, is county, are county commissioners, our type of full-time, which I know Judge spoke to you, and I always say, we're as involved or uninvolved as the voters allow. So I feel very much responsible, because I'm so involved in the community, but we're late, we have to, to you, the voters. So people often ask, who's your boss? You, the voters, are our boss. Ms. Church, it's funny, too, you know, why I'm interested in the city, but, and also how I should, uh...
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank, you know, the back, our county fathers, established with the government in the United States. And their choice was to have citizens who are actually in a community government, not full-time legislators, like we have turned into on the national level. And recently, we're supposed to go back home and hear what the folks say. This is a representative republic type of government. It's not a true democracy. We elect an official to balance and have representation. We live in your community that we represent, and so we can work with that community, live there, church with the community, we're all of sense. But anyway, we are, our, and even though most of us aren't at all, that these students three days believe in some sort of kind of, that is, is needed. We're paid in the fire county, about $40,000 a year, for that position. Now, how do we get things on the agenda? Either through the commissioners' court, the members on the commission, the department head, but anyway, we did submit that to the judge's office, who puts it on the, on the issue.
Ms. Tom, do you want to, uh, how do you, uh...
Absolutely. A revenue generating process is a personal conflict, revenue generated through fees that come into town, fines, and also basically loyal, what's, not property things, those who own property, residential or businesses, it comes to the county and they pay. That's how the revenue is built up and generated, and you pay our, my appeals that come into the county on every basis.
Thank you. And I think the last important question was, what's the management's spot? Okay, so first off, how do we do today, particularly in 2018, is regulation of this? And Josh, when you get 2018, Josh, when you say 2018, how do I get this? So we, question about, uh, 2019? Would you say that's a claim that's, y'all, y'all follow, while we, uh, we, uh... If you see them, I can walk through the, uh, materials, but 2018, 2019, it's free. Carrie, you have a question. It looks like the staff is moving under the facilities line, or they're moving under chairs, something like that. I don't know. It's me, Eddie.
I don't know, we, uh, doesn't mean it's a...
Second, for discussion. I have a follow-up question, Carrie. So will we, will we add into positions, or will we, will we add in any position we would like? Just, uh, I'm sorry, because it's a, a position.
Okay. Eddie? I have a question, I'm sitting on the floor. The options, we see our next one, approval of options, and the options, what's, uh, the number, the options, for April 30th? Check out this one, eight-five, one-five-six, the eight-five, oh-seven-seven, the options, one-two, one-nine, three-one-two, two-two, the number, seven-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, one-sixty-four. Question, yes. I make a question, we accept the options, as we say. I have a question, I'm sitting on the floor. For each person, the board, waiting to ask each person, the board. There's nothing unusual, a lot of insurance, both report, this time, however, our two months, kind of, where we don't have large funding, we'll get on the next, insurance fight report, it'd be about seven-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars, seventy cents. Yeah, if he has a single hospital plan, it's for a spouse. I have requested information as far as pharmacy, see whether this is an ongoing situation and all, and I had my work back there, that if we don't, they should show on the next insurance fight report. Eddie? I have a question, sir. Number, number five, what's, like, say, we don't have, for, this week. Number six, a question down there, this will be 22, we read, the ones that are, that are, and they, 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 they. Other than questions on this?
I have a question, I can't, sorry, I know a lot about the one, but, Carrie, on the 22nd, I just wanted to make sure we read it correctly. There's a two-day law, are we trying to do it one day or is it not?
It's ours. We are only, what have we lost here? Okay, so, those, I think those, that, if, uh, we, uh, right? We go, we're not, that's, we're, we're, okay.
So we still have, uh, our, and some agents have, uh, the, 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 the,[1173.44]
Last year was an off year, so it's okay. And then, uh, page fifteen, uh, the expenditure side. It's under share enforcement section. Uh, the land, uh, stop working in terms of the increase of six hundred twenty thousand to special net positions. Is that right or graphic? Is that something you hear? Okay, thank you. So, so we're getting across on that. Number eight, father and child, both of them, boards with senior and like, um, population in April, spots in number twelve, which is the commission of awareness. Great. How are you there? I'm going to be next, be next to people. Do you have a, do you have a, do you have a, uh, service now? Yeah, put on the towel and shut the door and go to your office. Morning. May one day, uh, maybe all of them are going to take that. Yeah, I mean, uh, usually it's a busy, uh, so. All right, this is orderly, clearly, about April, calling up the child abuse prevention and awareness. Whereas, this will be at June eighteen, if seven hundred fourteen permanent vehicles have a huge standing left in the parking lot. Whereas, child abuse time is a child home where, uh, possible separation from the court of law, of, of competitive language, such as social and emotional problems, such as loss of the skin, that interest, or relationship with adults and parents. And prevention programs targeted at minors, controlled by community use, of the medical, industrial, or the potential malfeasance. And prevention programs targeted at children that are in need of child awareness, not best employed, child abuse prevention, other kinds of practices. Child abuse prevention efforts deserve as a world of development, other social problems of concern and hope, and the policy may, in the event of our research, have a strong correlation between history and deeds, providing a thought, problem, and evidence. Creating self-protection, juvenile and adult crime, or social adjustment. Child abuse prevention creates a more compassionate society, one that places an eye on, you know, the role of children. Whereas, insurance, safety, security, and next generation requires the efforts of our hearts and the resources, is to be all on the path of behavior, of child abuse, all on the moral and ethical virtue, even for teaching all of the behaviors. Whereas, father and child, young child, who are working for the government, paying services to develop resources, working in strategies, in various services, vulnerable to human beings. Whereas, father and child support, father and child, child of the board, in its ever soon form, the improvements in child abuse, we've been creating, that's how much areas to do with prevention of child abuse. Now, before we, in order for the judge to agree, by commissioners for the public campus, that another way to consider our design, public campus, child abuse prevention, awareness of, as the body of state, they may, um, continue. Thank you. Thank you for that. You got your hands, this is your word, um, for, thank you so much. Again, the father and child, uh, coming to our board, and it's after the public services. We appreciate that we should provide. It would be difficult to, to, uh, to, uh, thank you so much. I believe. Having a question that we approve the resolution for father and child abuse prevention and work this month as a, like a motion, yes, I think. Obviously, thank you, same here for the order.
Thank you guys for watching.
We agreed this resolution to use in Thursday, okay? Uh, we'll be back, come back. Okay, now, now, father and child, search of this report, we can hear a report, recent. I have the order, right?
One of the things that I mentioned before, that I talked about, I also know this is part of my, uh, commission there towards, uh, pending meetings of, of, uh, official business for the camp. One of the, uh, things that I want to see, right, father and child, first of this, you understand, and, uh, I don't know how familiar you are with what that is, but it is a, uh, organization funded by all the taxing entities within father and child. They are the people that raise all the profit within those families. And, uh, then this is how, uh, we determine, we, uh, tax rates and things like that. So, anyway, it's, it's important, uh, group of folks who work with it. And, uh, I think I represented it on that board, uh, both families, also from each of the taxing entities. And so, uh, we have a meeting on, uh, March twenty, and I just wanted to report, we got to report. Uh, first of all, uh, there's, there's a lot, you know, three years, two minutes, and things like that, they improve that. Well, the first items of business was, uh, a request from the city to pay me to, uh, forgive the delay of charge until they give that back. The delay, not one day, we came to ask to, uh, to have that penalty forgiven, and we did forgive it, uh, the city, uh, we used to use, or, uh, we, uh, we, uh, anyway. Um, so as soon as we came to that, we did, uh, um, we had a couple of policies, uh, that we did change on the, uh, their employees. Now, they're not that big a deal, so, uh, one was nursing stations, and, uh, uh, that was kind of, um, on the, uh, the whole, uh, before the court, we, we had our first work session, and it's been a last very long, uh, uh. What the end result of that is, is it's going to be a three point three percent decrease from last year's, uh, so that's a good deal. We will have a public hearing on that, whether, and that work session, April thirty, so , uh, I believe you'd like to go to hear that discussion. There is, uh, and a phrase in the review board, you know, uh, it's a phrase, what the first review board, uh, most folks that hear equals, uh, if they contest, the amount of praise value of the property, you can apply to contest that, they have to, before the first review. We have three folks from, Ben, uh, Randall, and three folks from father, I, Sarah. And they do this, like, in the passing, about fifty dollars, you make the work pay, we there, uh, we present sixteen, and then it's after, uh, after five o'clock, they get another, they can receive any policy now, so, in the passing, fifty to ten, so we give them a raise for that. Um, I did want to report a couple of things that our chief personal officer reported to us, and one, much to my, uh, weakness, I guess, I didn't realize that the Texas swamp law was often set in a power, uh, on the first edition. And their property tax division renewed speech, uh, two district property evaluations every year, and if you don't read within that's right, within that school district is penalties. And so, they very good at shit, and they pretty much determined, and say that, what our property tax values will be, they don't want people abusing them, pay a greater, uh, percentage of value than, than we do here, that's a thing I saw, so, that's what they, they've done that. But anyway, they also found another deputy district, and they wrote them, and had them in their, their jobs, and they gave our, uh, first edition as possible, if they could. Uh, we had four, um, protests that went to the state, from, uh, from our school districts, and Bushland, and S E B R, who wrote, Howie Mark, and, uh, and we're not on that seat, and they had all been settled, and, uh, the subject, the results, and we don't have any penalties. Okay, and the other thing for the court, uh, last year, the, uh, I believe that we were, uh, working with software, and, uh, that's still in the process, so, uh, that will be more further on that, as we get more, different courses for the commission. How often do you, uh, child, uh, 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 child? I can't do, uh, 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 so, it's hard to press. But there's one thing you can say, but, uh, uh, first, you need, but, um, okay. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'm sorry, because I'm just curious, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, maybe at, uh, the dollar figure? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Number ten resolution, making assistance for, uh, to the center, and that the law provides for standard execution of patient's rights, is, 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 is,[1277.85] the machinery equipment, it's a business personal property. So it'll be about $27 million, also on tax, also to be repaid back annually at those levels.
So what's the financial rebate that will go from the city side?
The city side over 10 years is an estimate a little over $600,000, and then counties will be a little over $1.2 million.
And the city also did step down, the state stepped down?
Same exact, it's a 5%, 7%, 60%.
So with the city's action on the 38 side, right, it's roughly $600,000, and on the county side, roughly $1.2 million. So this is our very first 381, right, and this is fairly non-traditional for us. Is there a reason because of the taxes enterprise umbrella that they are pursuing a 381 versus a tax abatement holistically at that level? It's like an administrative thing, or if it really is kind of a yajivada now?
It's more of another philosophy on how you do the agreements, because you do the arrangements necessarily, so those taxes are 10%. This is not a duty to, like, better taxes than you need to go through with. Either they have the jobs, either they have the payroll before you, but they never rebates. So you have opportunity to address issues, don't have their employees that are paying all your profits. So, again, some of the smaller agreements, the agency orders, if somebody's not meeting, you have to go outside and process and try and give that back or dispute. So it's just an administrative function.
Okay, so the request is 10 years for a $20 million debt new project, you're adding handful of more full-time employees, and then the county side, we would be providing roughly $1.12 million, $1.2 million over the 10 year. So from the PSA side, what are services, I mean, I have a good recap, but what are services under the cancer research or service line that will be provided in the new $50,000 program? We don't have a number of, right, what will be different when this spending properly comes up?
The personal maintenance, we're going to, they say, the difference is that we'll be able to upgrade our equipment to the latest that is out there for cancer treatment. And it'll be very specific, where we have taken care of patients in the past with treatments of six to eight weeks in duration or longer times, we're going to be able to get the latest equipment that is more focused on cancer treatment for the specific site without having to have a large spread of radiation that could actually cause damage. What we're hoping to attract new patients for our market that have been typically going to use and then the cancer there is at stake. So we'll be the center of cancer treatment care for North Texas and Southern states.
So is interview medical partnerships, the equipment is kind of one side of the conversation, but it's really like the research part of it, the industry, right, of also bringing new expertise to the area outside of the equipment that helps you hone in on the location of the cancer?
Well, we're also going to be adding a handful, six, seven, six new employees, we're going to be adding two new medical oncologists, and I think it's five, I think six or seven jobs, so two new additional physicians will be added in that group.
Are there any specialties that you're going after for the oncologists, like that may vary against this equipment? Is there a subset of specialty that you're going after?
Well, there's going to be, we're going to be more focused on neurological repair procedures, in particular, the osteoporosis, the plantarization, different, but neurologies can be one area we'll try to address and do more focus.
Do you ever see a market for even lung cancer, which is the most common and most terrible? Do you ever see, and that's a personal question, could that say it on a personal level?
I would say absolutely. I think right now we have specifically targeted that, that should be something that we should consider.
And then one final question on the side, and I want to say a few of these topics. So I have, I had several questions coming in. And to bring it back to you on the administrative side, Gary, I'm thinking of you and your department every year, because there's an administrative kind of burden that the county will take on too, which is a good burden because the teeth is really the limit of remittance, which very much lacks in our tax payment process. So is the city taking the lead on all these checkpoints and then forwarding that to the county? We obviously are putting more in the pocket, right, $1.2 million. So we have more interest, but administratively, it would help if the city would take the lead, send the reports over, you know, those kind of things, so we can top if we can handle.
Sure, I think we can do that absolutely. So we get the same information, and then all of the questions, well, probably is the county, too.
Any other questions?
How can I do, talk about positive experiences, December? Camerillo is looking at as a least price saving, especially the Panhandle, areas of the game, medical services. And so if we, this is a type of effort certainly will enhance that, make us more destination for medical services, there's a multiplier effect that we have to talk about. When people come to town, they say nothing out of the thing. And so, that thing too about people are confused, especially being confused in the last few months on national level, about what tax rebate or tax, uh, the value it is. Taxes go along, people come in the face. It's not hard, so if we agree to get back a rebate, we just give them the back of the money. And so that money wasn't there until it was quite your cap. And it's surprising to you now, but if you can know, you can be like, hey, you're careful. And I would ask for this note with the recommendation.
Quick follow-up question to that. Well, no, because being a staple, this could be looking at ancillary services that go with this, so the exact one I gave, a lot of times the families are traveling for this type of treatment. Obviously, the fiscal impact of, if this is families that are being prepared, right, that have insurance, they often have housing needs, food needs, family needs, and things that come with that.
Well, not specifically, but I think that we can also obtain that thought, because I agree with you, as we look at providing services that are outside of our role to the tri-state area, I think we need to consider those options, sort of, that are as convenient as they have been in other markets. So we should be doing that, and I think I'll take that back on as a theme, see what we can do to make sure that we're attracting that here we have a good social.
Yeah, especially if you're in a market where you're competing with a new person. And I, I am in the medical field, and I also have personal experience to this, but if you're really trying to get in that space, what they offer, that I've seen on a personal level, is this whole comprehensive type package, right, what is housing, like, what is travel outside of the actual treatment? And I know that we're obviously here to talk about treatment, but the opportunity to have this discussion holistically, we're trying to get new patients and we're looking at that same space.
Totally agree.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to do that, we agree with you. Thanks, we do have a great, we say office.
Number 13, isolation regarding the policy of decision to consider an active counter resolution. It's a word that legislation sponsored by the Central California Center basing that proportion because I would seriously say that's a model to get this to go down.
Well, this came to our office with certain, some office, and per resolution per, so I didn't get, I didn't try to contact her, like, the money from the support, but.
Number 14, sent bill 392, we consider that for course, we consider tax pay, send your, send your 290, grant funding program to reduce access, and rest, and code, and why?
Good morning. This is the Senator, I think we've applied for about a year ago, probably got the OJ to everything sorted out. This is allowing us with this grant, we'll employ another concept, have it be concentrated on strictly on a specific program. It'll also help us, DVC gets three people out of this grant, and as they get ready for releasing the deal, it's a long handoff to us, to the DVC to help continue with the treatment and stuff that already we've received. Just a side note, we have three councils that are already running a lot of this, and I did some checking the other day, they have seen 119 of our employees, and graduated from these different programs, and we're going to have 11 come back to do, that's a 90% success rate, so we're hoping that this success rate continues.
From what time is your, that is that's a year, two years?
That was a year.
A year. What are they doing that they get that recipe different? Is it just a handoff, or?
Well, I know we don't have one, but, um, although a few people out there that sit through one of the graduations, um, these guys, the people, what people don't understand is these people have no concept of hospitals, or anybody that really cared about them, or taught them the lessons, and that's what these ladies do, and they teach them. And we have people that are hungry to learn that. Example was, and this is just another program that we did, but we had a bad one through our DVD program, and grads were, been sitting in jail for four years, and he's not winning, and he's sitting there working on homicide talk. What's the DVD done do? But it's changed, it's been worked out into, same with one of the, one of the ladies that went through the last graduation, um, it was amazing to sit there and listen to the correctional officer talk about how combative and angry she was when she came in, fought all the time, and now she's sitting in class, and she's going to give her mental, which is why I believe that, and please, I'm, I'm a little bit of a small man.
This is, this is being back from our old department, and this, this, we're seeing this success, and so I think this always increases us, actually.
Increases our participation. But also, our ladies have seen since February the 27th, they have sat down and visited with over 8,000 inmates, but a lot of those going to go. So it's hard to name them through the graduation, but over 8,000 inmates is what they've seen continue.
So sure, on this, I understand, I just want to make sure I follow you. So DVC is getting three additional full-time initial professionals, and then as I kind of turn the page, or look at the county side, it's saying that we commit to, I think, three people, I'm following this correctly, the front row coordinator, initial help officer, and then coordinator. What I'm not clear on is are those new positions or people that you already have today?
The positions we have are in prime, who already have, and so they'll work with the one that we've been standing for.
Okay. And we're not confirmed on, right, this, or is?
Yeah, that's been, that's been, I agree with you.
Okay. And then the final thing, on the term of agreement, it says April 1, 2019 through August 31, 2019, that's a very short period.
Well, only because of the rent actually, and the fact that I told you, so they settled back with that thing, and now we're going to that.
So would we expect to see another, um, no, I don't understand, in like, in September?
Well, we also, I think we're focused more on the larger subject than on the, on the, this will be what we can say.
Thank you, sir. I make the motion that we approve the no understanding between the, uh, Park County Sheriff's Office and the Texas Medical Center's joint participation in the bill 292. Second motion.
Number 15, contract renewal, consider that for your professional source contract, consider just to get this thing, providing for JPI assistance, including, how many greenhouses have been federalized, this action program, including state current aid assistance program?
Basically, basically, this is a contract that, uh, which follows with the SCAP, which follows the information, so we can play up and down, with the, do you have a plan to change the, or should we?
I can hear myself a little bit.
It's incredible. It's JPI is the company that, that we pay in the term of what we did for the SCAP grant, so that is to put in the information to SCAP, and we get part of our, most of the dollars, and that we gave to, uh, so this, 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 we take that.
So this is the third party you used to apply for the grants, and how many people were granted that percentage, is this the one?
Right.
And do you only use them for the one grant that you referenced?
Yes.
Okay. This, it said the agreement was started in 2010, so obviously we, there's still to be a good job, like, for putting them back up.
Yes.
We say, well, let's have, we keep all the numbers, whatever, if they have numbers that are, are six of them, and forward that to the, so. And the money we get, I goes how I can to things that we can do within the jail. Money that's building facilities that I have, that has to be used in the jail, so it's, we're starting at $38,000, so it's, it's great, and it's just another asset for us in town.
Motion, and second on the evaluation. Okay, thank you, guys. I think that we're going to pause just a second, and see a bunch of other videos, what we did to, uh, the election, we go with $2,007, dollars instead.
Did you know Texas is made up of 254 local counties? And while Alaska may be bigger in land, it only has 30 county equivalents. In fact, no other state comes close to having as many counties as Texas. So how did Texas get to 254? Well, let me show you. Counties go all the way back to Spanish rule when they were called municipios and centered around towns and settlements. In 1836, when Texas became its own country, the 23 Spanish municipios became Texas's first counties. As you see, these counties were mostly in the southern and eastern parts of the state because that's where the people were. Out west was simply Bear County, an enormous landmass reaching all the way to modern-day Wyoming. In 1837, Texas began establishing its own counties, with Houston County being the first, named after the new president of Texas. Thank you. Next came Fannin County, then Robertson and so forth, bringing the total to 29. For the next few years, Texas slowly added new counties as the settlers moved west. Then in 1845, Texas joined the United States of America. And by the next year, its 37 counties swelled to 67 counties. And it didn't slow down there. Every new county needed a new name, so many took the names of Texas heroes like Texas Ranger Jack Hayes, thank you, or Three-legged Willie, thank you. In 1850, Texas sold land to the US and its shape became what it is today. But that didn't stop county growth, and nine new counties were added. The basic idea for creating new counties was that nobody should be more than one day's horse ride from the courthouse. People need to be close to the essential services counties provide, and the counties need to be close to the people. So as the population spread out, so did the counties. By 1860, there were 152 Texas counties, each one unique in geography, shape, and population. One census showed Rusk being the most populated at 15,000 Texans, while Zavala County counted only 26. One of those new counties was Greer County, and even though it was north of the Red River, well, Texas claimed it as its own. That is, until the US Supreme Court said otherwise. The times of the Civil War slowed growth dramatically, but during Reconstruction, Texas once again started a steady rise, especially as West Texas and the Panhandle became safer for settlement. In 1876, the enormous Young Territory was divided into 50 counties, using, well, less than creative methods. But who doesn't love a good grid? Then in the 1880s, some of Texas's largest counties were split to allow for local government. Tom Green County alone birthed 10 different counties. A few more were added until finally in 1931. Loving County was created as the last of the Texas counties, bringing the total to 254. So that's how we got here, but the reason why is even more important. It's because local government run by locally elected folks best serves the community. It did more than 175 years ago, and it still does today.
Howdy, I'm proud to be a Texan.
Me too, but I'm a McLennan County gal at heart. I live in Waco, which I guess is also McLennan County, and don't get me wrong, I'm proud to be a Texan, but I'm a city girl at heart. All that county stuff is in the country, right?
Uh, hold on there, missy. Whether you live in the city or not, you're just as much a part of the county as anyone else.
That's right, and your state, your city, and your county all have important jobs to do.
Are you saying that we've got three governments running the show here?
Yeah, that seems like a lot. What do they all do anyway?
Well, I'm glad you asked. Let's start with you, cowboy. We all love living in the Lone Star State, but the government has a limited purpose and scope. That's one of the reasons the legislature only meets every other year. When it does, it has to make decisions and laws that apply to the entire state as a whole, and it needs a local partner to implement its laws and policies.
So who does that?
I'm glad you asked. That's where the counties come in. They were created to implement state policies and enforce state laws at the local level. It's where the rubber meets the road on carrying out the state's priorities. You see, the county enforces the state's laws and policies. Counties provide services locally tailored to fit the needs of the local residents, and they can do this because they are run by their locals and connected to the people.
Yeah, but isn't the city even more local than the county?
That's a great question, one that I'm glad you asked. Cities are local, and they provide services, but with limits and within the city limits. If you live in a city, they may provide things like water, electricity, and waste removal. Bigger cities have a police force, and the city may build certain streets.
Well, that sounds like everything I need. What else is there?
Well, I'm glad you asked. That brings me back to your county. Your county government fills the gap, providing things that the state and city government do not. It provides law enforcement countywide. It runs the court system. When there are bad guys, it keeps the jails where they stay. It registers voters and holds elections for everything from local government offices to the President of the United States. Counties keep track of records like deeds, birth certificates, and death certificates. Counties build and maintain about half the roads in Texas. The county provides health care to lower-income residents. It provides emergency management during times of crisis, and county often collects taxes on behalf of other entities like school districts and cities. Are you getting the picture?
Wow, that's a lot.
Yes, it is.
Oh, so I get it. The county is actually the political subdivision enabled by the Texas Constitution to carry out state laws, but with direct and connected relationship to the people it serves.
Very good, city gal. Yes, you are Texans and may live in the city, but remember, you are also proud county residents, too.
Thank you, big voice in the sky.
Yeah, and do you have a name or something?
Well, uh.
Uh, yeah.
Huh?
Oh, hey, guys, uh, it's me, Chet. I guess I'm just a guy who thinks county government's cool, and I, uh, thought y'all should know about some of this stuff. Uh, anyway, uh, see you later.
Okay.
Well, I hope you learned something, because.
Texas counties deliver.
Hey.
So the next to the winner, open up the, uh, the question, initially the best one, which I'm going to be ready, but I'm going to go to the actual best. Number 18, long-term, considering, following, going on tonight, is this resignation of this, 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 But one of the big things that's going on in elections right now is the question of, are they reliable? Are they reliable? And, you know, elections have fallen under Department of Homeland Security now. We have cybersecurity, uh, both evaluations and training. And every time something happens, what, what most of it, it happens, actually doesn't, it just makes you worry. It changes your perception of whether elections are safe or whether they're reliable. There's several things I want you to know. First of all, the election committee, you'll see that there cannot, has not, will not, everybody connected to the internet. So when somebody says, oh, yeah, we're gonna hack, there's no, say, hack in there and do something, you can't do it. Um, they cannot, you know, that is by design. There's, there's also a lot of safeguards that we have to do with elections. We, um, program our own elections. All the equipment is kept in the room, and there's only five people that had, had keys to that room, only three of them had codes to get into the equipment. And every time we're in, using that equipment, every keystroke we make is recorded and taught to that person. So if any of you want to get in there, and there's only three people, that even could get in there. If they could get into it and they did anything to it, the key strokes would say exactly what they did that they did. Then you're required to test the equipment, and by law, we tested it three times. Um, in truth, we tested it every week. But we have a public test. In, in this particular election, we have to create a matrix, and we've got a way to vote for paper ballots and electronic ballots in such a way that when we tabulate it, every candid, candidate is a different total. So that we can prove that when you go back there and vote for candidate A, you're about to get to candidate B. And so we create this, um, matrix, we have to vote at first publicly. Um, you'll be able to add a newspaper, and you're welcome to come and serve as we do this. We've had, since I've been there, we've had one person there who came to watch his public do this. But, um, we do, you know, the public's invited to them. Then on election day, we do begin to tabulate the early voting votes in the afternoon. And, but before we're allowed to do that, we have to do the test again. And we have to pass it, and it has to be perfect. Then we tabulate the votes, and before we can leave there, um, we have to tabulate the third test. Prove that nothing's happened and that the election committee has recorded as it should. Then addition, in addition to that, there's, um, the secretary of state is now asking everyone if, whether he's a racist or not. We have to do a hand count. And so following the election, we have to go get, uh, reconcile, and not go in advance. We have to set up, and we have to do a hand count, and it also has to work. So, um, if you ever look on the inside of an election, you realize how difficult it would be to change an election. Could someone, who's not supposed to be voting, vote? Yeah, it could happen. Because working, but in large scale, it cannot happen. And I think some of my best election workers are those who have called and said, I have some questions about elections. And they come in, and they, they, we will show them around, we teach them a little bit about elections, and some of those people can become, they're advocates. Because they understand the process, they understand how hard it is, and, and how hard we work to make sure that what you vote is what it's tabulated. So today, we have set out back there is the election that will begin on April the twenty-second for early voting, and on election day, it's Saturday, May fourth. And those machines are in test mode, which means you're voting on those, and trying to go into the real election. However, after we've done the tabulation, we are going to tabulate, but too soon, so we're not going to send anything out prior to the election, because we don't do anything that would sway any of our decision on where we'd be at. Um, but we'll be sending you guys to your schools the information, so you will know how you're voting out. So, we need to, you'll go, you'll start on the land, how does this can happen during lunch, is that correct?
Uh, actually, I think we have time to do that now.
Okay, um, we're making a, right now, and so you will get a code. You take that access code, and you will be able to go to any of the six machines. Now, in this election, there are different, we're going to do all the same ballot. That includes, um, candidates to vote. And that's, fortunately, it's kind of different in this election. Emerald College and Emerald ISB are electing for the CHC's, and, and that election is done in candidates' way. So you can vote up to three times for one candidate. You can have three votes. So you can vote, rate your candidate, you can vote, also one run for another, or you can, you can say all three of your votes for one candidate. So if you are writing that one on our equipment, if we select a candidate, you'll give them a button, and it'll ask you a question, how many votes do you want to give to the same? So it's a little bit different, just read instructions, follow the march, and, um, after you have that, you can, there's a ballot cam on this side, and maybe it's your man, and then in the school, they're gonna be gone for, um, some weeks.
And Melinda, before you, uh, excuse us, just start voting.
Yes.
Judge, come here. Can we take care of the last couple that you guys, that it will be pretty quick, and that it will be come back? You'll have time to get up, kind of walk around, votes will come back, and there's the agenda, I have your questions that you're gonna be able to ask the commissioners for. So we can do those, so please, I have a consent, release, the state, those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we're not seeing the voting count project, so we're, we're, we're.
Good morning. I've got this, uh, I'm using the tool for the cooling tower last time. I've got some calls that came in from our current contractor that we used for space. I didn't know that it was out, but I was going to see, so if you allow, and I will put. Okay, so, uh, what is in your hand? It's not, uh, this is more of a, so, we have several fans that, uh, the cooling tower itself, so we can replace those fans, or we can, uh, do the cooling tower. So, cooling tower itself is cracked, it's out of glass, it has several similar patches on it. So, it's, uh, maybe, let's go ahead and go for it. Uh, the price difference is quite a bit higher, if you get a new one. But it's not a bad thing, you know, it's a, it's an actionable repair, because if you don't have the cooling tower, we don't have any issues with it. So, uh, I thought that was something that I would share with you guys, and, uh, and to see the numbers. I've visited briefly the area, and, uh, she's aware of it, but we should come to you on that, because we're looking at options. Because it's, it's a little costly.
So I'm guessing the base price is two hundred and thirty-three thousand, is that accurate? Are we proposing we add any additional options, or are we just looking at the base price?
I would just do the base price right now. Uh, basically, the cooling tower, you want to kind of phase, you want to replace it for about forty years. And two, two thirty-three, eight fifty, that particular model, that's, that's a standard model, but, but the, 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 uh, the same would still base it, the more, uh, water, so. The base price would be fine.
Do you have a harder option?
The two options are three options for our, uh, replacement things, for twenty-three thousand. Do the cooling tower, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, would be nothing. That's, that's the only, those are the three options I have.
And, and, Karen, I know you are sort of here to, uh, we see, so this is unjudged, is this the contingency account, or on your, your facilities budget, to offset that?
No, yeah, we're fully, you know, for the capable, it's, you know, capital projects, um,
No, because all of us have, you know, for the capital projects, um... And that's what we're doing. And this would be the capital project line? Is it because of the government or the facility? The government, correct? Are you asking for action to pay it? Or are you just wanting to make a sort of a price?
If you're ready to do action, I'm ready for action. I just, I didn't want to hit you with that and make you do that.
I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing you today. More attention. Did you say if we get our condition again?
If, if the Kool-Aid Tower itself goes out, we, we won't, we'll lose your commission. And if...
It feels like you don't owe us anything.
It doesn't have to be a commitment, it's all.
I made a motion that we approve $233,850 for the replacement. As presented by the facilities director, funds from the capital projects.
No, sir, just the base price.
Do you merely say that?
Thank you. I have a form of inclusion that I have with my head. I can even, everybody, you need more pressure.
Okay, well, there's only the job for us. Um, then we have five hundred, which means three individuals in our shop. So if you select one of those female, they are far out. Eighteen free change of ballots, make a shift on this meeting basis. Two of them are now in the house, so I'll see you later.
I'll catch you.
To the others for next time. Um, Judge, for next time, I have the official title. I have the name of our five county council. Three C two is the national council and we pay for it. And by what, um, I believe I'll be a top one. But I'd be nice to let you know next time.
It's really my bad for the video. I'm going to do the recognition of all subjects.
Yeah, I see.
In, uh, last week, unfortunately, I have this, uh... Big, 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 happening session where additional work is required. And as far as, uh... What we can do is, uh, we just want to apologize for not being there. And thank the, uh, the commission to the president to support that. Go to the, support that decision that I have to put with you. They take foresight, leadership, courage.
Um, that one? Okay, I think you have, uh, you have a question for us already. So you guys, man, you all have a piece of paper on your tables that is saying how to speak questions. Well, also, more than welcome to carry these papers off as a casual potential. It's not all serious, it's a conference. Uh, we do have one question. Uh, I think it is type one of the agent. I also have a question for Chair Thomas. Uh, what is the state criminal alien assistance program? Chair Thomas?
I don't know.
I think we want more, uh...
I think that was good. Uh, it's basically when a alien in this country commits a crime. And all they do is attract them. And so it's tracking those buildings. Hopefully there's a, uh, for better place.
Will you have any questions? If you may, if anyone, for example, I'm a governor, you all should... And I'm not going to ask questions the other way. Maybe, maybe you'll start spelling some, uh, about things about. You run into their office, the first board members, a judge, or county. If you lose it, you order stores.
Okay, I can do that. It was an interesting story. I worked for the county judge for 20 years. Got suspended, first board board office. And he had a stroke in 2010. And causes cancer to his brain and world. He was out of consciousness. So we carried on without him, as we could, uh, for about three years. And I was there. And then one day he lost it and crashed me. So I left, uh, boxes in hand, and went home and sat on my couch for three days. And by the fourth day, decided I said, I'm going to judge. Many are made on the wall of the law, I'm not sure. I would have looked at it as an exception, so yes, we did call him home. But I was trying to run and, um, I got six, most experienced, about forty people who said that they had never done a campaign before and neither had I. And so we start off and thinking that we can handle it. We got help from people, raised a lot of money, did a lot of yard service, a lot of praying. No wars involved. And, um, when I had four, I was, uh, I just told them, I had four opponents. And, um, I won the primary with fifty percent plus thirty-five people. So I'm telling you, if you don't think it counts, it does. I don't care what the subject is, if you say, oh, I'm going to vote for it. Because it does count. So with that said, I didn't have, uh, an election in general, just because I wanted to win. And so I came first to the university apartment and it was quite, um, a coffee celebration. So that's my story and it's my fifth year of this. That's a question, I'm not going to ask. Who do you?
Um, just that they'll have completely come large, it is to run a few places. So it's a fun, just a fun budget. How big the stadium is.
Uh, what you have to report to the state, what finally you collect it during that campaign. Okay, I'm ready. That's good. I said the budget of $50,000, I wrote $69,000. Uh, which is very few, it's like, I wrote $69,000, you have to, you know. Uh, but the state does regulate what you can take, how much you can take. Um, how you have to report it and you have to report every year. And we don't have to use two, two, two points of, of financial. So they, they keep up with you. They make their own guidelines, you have to go by. And, um, everybody, everyone, anybody, to me, anybody running for office has their guidelines, they have to go by. And they're very strict. And but they, but they keep you honest, that's for sure. And, um, yeah, so we might just, we, we knew it all, we weren't wrong. We had a good time, we had a, I have to tell you, there were days when I lost on the world and the business. But it all, it all turned out first time. So it's my fifth year in office and, um, I don't know what's going to happen after three. That's my story. You got us, much of yours?
I can take mine. Um, so I had been in the commission store for almost eight years, this November. Um, my story is a little different. So I was appointed before I was elected. Um, kind of how that works is my credit is a service commissioner, Manny Perez. And he was the longest-serving county commissioner in the city. I actually am right, the longest-serving elected official in the city. Um, as Judge mentioned, there are no term limits on, on the county side. And so, um, he became very ill unexpectedly. And so the search was kind of on quietly, obviously out of respect for him and his family. And what's, again, you need, about county government, you have to live in that precinct to run. Um, I had no ambitions and still don't for political office. I still work. Um, my profession is in the healthcare industry. And so I work at hospitals all over the country. The company I work for is based out of Seattle. Um, but I, I work on the technology side. But I started as a high school student registering patients at the hospital. So far, I was exposed to healthcare. And my grandparents raised me, so I always opened the Medicare forms and read their little statements. And so I always became very acquisitive about healthcare and how information was being presented to patients. Um, in really critical times in their life. But, um, again, Commissioner Perez was ill and, um, I had, I got a phone call on Friday. Like I was at my mom's house at barbecue, I remember. And it was one of my colleagues, I served on lots of boards in the city and the county. I've always been very involved as a first generation high school graduate, college graduate. So I've always been very, very involved in the community. But I got a phone call on Friday that said, have you ever applied to be county commissioner? And I said, no, what do they do? And so I started researching and I did what I think a lot of students, women, especially young women. I say absolutely not, I look completely different, I don't look like I would fit at all up there. Um, and then as I started to research the issues, uh, what I had, what I felt more than anything was a responsibility. So I put my name in the hat. There were eleven of us going after the appointment. And it was just like you would expect for a job interview. Uh, but at that point, I knew that I was going to run for office regardless of whether I got the appointments or not. Um, so I had a lot of questions. Um, and then I did what all those moms do, you apply, put your name in for county commissioner. And then I remember my kids had a dentist appointment that afternoon, so I took them to the dentist. And I got a phone call to say, you're the nice county commissioner, so we'll see you tomorrow morning. All the media will be there. And I remember getting a little real estate book that they have at Oxford offices. So I got all these phone numbers, a lot of, I had many people I had to call. And I remember sitting there because my, um, my son was seven and my daughter was two at the time. And they were in the dentist's office waiting to be seen. And I remember thinking, oh my, my life would be different forever now. And it certainly has been. So I just kind of shared that story. Um, my election was similar to Judge Tanner. I had three opponents in my primary. So that, that, I was just running to not have a runoff. I thought any guy that runs for office is exhausting and is really a couple of service. So I say that because, um, I, I have found that there's only two people in office. And of course, these are all just my opinions, people that like the title or people that like the work. Um, those are all people that I've been exposed to. And so when I say that is whatever you're calling it, it really needs to come from somewhere inside and deeper. Because seasons will change, we won't be the same people up here, we'll be all doing different things in our life. So wherever you're at and wherever you lead, I just encourage you to love people, even when you disagree. And try to find common ground. Because I think that's where the majority of the work is done, not only on the county side, but I feel like even on the national level. We all see social media and see the national conversation as the two extremes of both political parties, my party included. And that's what gets all the attention, but where the work is being done is in the middle. So I encourage you to find common ground. And as silly as it sounds, it really does start even in your, your local high school student governments. Or you have a disagreement and what is that look like? But I encourage you, whenever you're called to go after it, especially if you're the first to ever do that. And your family or those that follow, you really have a responsibility for those that follow behind you.
Can I ask you?
I will hold you with my story. But I would say to all of you, it's a challenge to become involved. No matter what it is, whether it's church or community, your neighborhood or whatever. I think what's so funny, when you do become involved, is that there's a community side to you. Whenever you are involved. And so if you see that as a way to help others, I guess that is the key. That's the only reason I ever run in for, becoming involved, to see if I can help community or other people. And so they're going to look at you as a leader. Just because you take the mission. So don't let it leave, like stop and you, because that's something you want to do. I have people come to me and ask me, that's why it wasn't anything I really desired. And it's not something that has made up my. It's because I'm a general commissioner, that does the same as you guys. It's whatever, however that is, whatever. So anyway, don't, uh, don't let that stop you, you don't involve in, uh, your business. That's the main thing.
We have a question. What ideas you all have to expand the number of business opportunities, possibilities in the traffic account on I-40 to drive such projects? Also, the cheese shake factory. So anything you need to do. A cheese shake factory.
Cheese shake factory. I remember that, I know. Okay, so, um, one of the projects that I've shared on enough is called the Tiers Two Fast Incremental Investment Zone. And it's East Gateway Tears. And so it's a hundred percent around the framework to spur new development. So when you think about I-40 East, between Eastern Street and Lakeside, is roughly the zone. Uh, what is slated for is over a hundred million dollars of net new development. And a very hard part of our city to develop. But, um, part of that conversation is on I-40 front, so you can build on the traffic counts. And our catalyst to that happening is the Lee family who owns Big Texan. So Bobby and Danny, um, Lee are interested in moving the Big Texan kind of over, if you will, to one of the starlight franchises. So I don't want to get over familiar with that venue, so it's fairly used in the city. So kind of moving that over alongside Get That Hotel slated to come up. Um, everything you can think of has been dreamed, it's planned, shopping, hotels, a hockey rink, evening, things have been vetted. So that's kind of the high level. What I learned, that I didn't know at the beginning, um, a lot of times these, these developers come from outside the city of Amarillo. And so when you go recruit these developers and you're, you're selling to say, hey, this is why we built a $50 million project in Amarillo. A lot of them expect incentives to then move there. And some of those incentives, uh, majority of those incentives are on the city side. The city has deeper purstries than the county. Uh, we are very limited in terms of what we can offer. But a lot of times they go to the city and they say, well, give me a rebate, if you will, like on sales tax, as an example. That's how the synergy deal passed, that's in Times Square, everybody's about the synergy. So that's the very first, that three A degree that we have on the agenda today. So the developers expect kind of a package for you to sell them on Amarillo. Um, there's been a lot of conversation around what, how big is Amarillo really? And so someone said the cheese shake factory and what kind of joke, but that conversation has actually come up a bit. Um, I hear the Panera, I hear where's cheese shake and where's Panera, or the two that I hear. Um, all the, so anyways, what they pay attention to is the traffic counts. So how many people travel on I-40? So yes, in which direction are they moving? And when we kind of settle the county and Amarillo at a larger scale, we don't just look at Potter and Randall, the makeup Amarillo. We often describe ourselves as kind of like a mini, mini metro. We're not that old, that's for sure, but we have all the handheld counties that feed into Amarillo proper. So even when the ballpark team would be vetted, what team would we get? What would that look like? How, how much can Amarillo really support? How much will people spend? And those kind of things, that's the traffic count. Um, it's a company that is based out of DC, the fifth account. And they're really looking at how many people. So when you think of these big box locations, like the cheese shake factory, if you're not even at a threshold. Um, they call it house swaps, which is where we look at the warehouses. So they count the number of house swaps that are buying property, being vetted, and the traffic counts. So if you're not even at a minimum threshold, they kind of don't need to look at you. But it's not personal, it's just not their business model. So that's things I understood, I wish I would have known a couple of years ago. Because that saves a lot of time, you're trying to recruit developers, they come in for, and then count specifically by count. But that's obviously what the property will build because that's the property tax, that's why it's a county.
Not sure if you guys have information, there's cheese shake factory, cheese shake at the Barnes and Noble. So you can come about there, say about cheese shake. Now, also, if any of you have information about voting, the Potter County website for that is pottercountyvotes.com. And you should all check it out and look for ballot and candidates. And any more questions? No more? Yes.
Can you give us an update on the Mario project?
Update on the Mario project? So the Mario, name of the plan is, I've got two big counties for Amarillo, this is also these county commissioners for. So the name of the plan is, I have a lot of attention citywide, it's a city flagship project. So it goes to this commissioners for. We were number five, that allowed me to take $75,000 to the city and said, hey, I was, let's be a collaborative partner and let's focus on neighborhood plans. Um, because there are areas of our county specifically, which city are tied together that are distressed. So we didn't really know, we were, it wasn't a clear asking. And you know, we don't pay away, we don't put money on the table freely, right? So $75,000 is really, really a big, that's commissioners for. So we took that to the city and said, that's just, let's do a name of the plan, one, because we originally asked. Uh, it actually got struck, didn't make the budget the first time, it's a different council at the time. Fast forward to where we are today, uh, we have been active partner in that discussion. And there are two name of the plans that have been adopted, the Royal Heights and the Mario, which was the question. Sandra Stenow just picked up and then these ridges to follow. So I just really wanted to share that about my fellow commissioner for members. Because it is fairly untraditional because of our county side and that's only in the city space. But it just speaks to how both partnerships can complement each other. The city has definitely done the lion's share of the work. This is their staff doing the work. I think they just did a fresh one, these roughly $7.8 million has already been done holistically. So I say that because the members of this corps started the discussion with $75,000. But to update on the Mario plan specifically, the, the thing they're going to probably see first is, uh, the mural. There's a mural being added on 10th Street and the underpass by Yes to Foods. Many of yous familiar with that location, good or yes? Uh, but there's a mural and it was such a cool idea because there is a community member that lives in the Mario and I'm telling this to his face. So he's always a, no, but can't get done, it'll never work kind of guy. And so he brought an idea and he said, well, if on one side of the mural, we paint it about center city. And then on the other side of the mural, it's a bridge, then it was a Bible in historic history. By only creating the two worlds together as opposed to dividing them, which I thought was genius. And then especially with this gentleman up here, that's awesome. So he, you know, was pretty jumped up and he came up with the idea. So the first thing there you see is actually the mural and the underpass. Surprised he gave that a little negative attention, I think. Which I was surprised about, I don't know, because it was the art piece of it. I'm not artistic, but I appreciate that work and I love how it brings people together. Um, and I shared this with Highland Park, they go, I'm kind of entered the art and the idea and the work stuff. But I'm actually the most excited about is the city will be redoing the lighting under that underpass. Will be, will have a base coat, just like your picture house. And will be fixing the sidewalk, kind of walkability. So even though the mural is important, it's those other pieces that I'm actually personally very excited about. And then the second piece that's been vetted in the name of that plan is when you go down 10th Street and you had east, uh, walkability. So sidewalks being addressed and lighting. So what you're going to find in all neighborhood plans, and we've already seen this, and I expect Sandra Stenow to be the same. People walk the alleyways, walkability, sidewalks to not be uneven, especially for our elderly, that needs to be active in our community. And lighting, lighting is, lack of lighting is a driver to poverty. So those are usually the three things. So those are the two. Um, they also started a medical clinic and that was identified with the plan, which is pretty cool. A lot of caper kids, eight health students have been involved in helping to serve and free people. So a lot of the end of work price on that plan, I'm not pretty sure, on is just, uh... They, they're applying for housing credits for the same entities property on, on North Town Road, so the old hospital down there. And I do fundamentally believe if anything happens on that property, that would be a change for North Town Road. And they're applying for like a housing, a senior living area. I think about a little vivid, it's by T A, for those who are, who will be in that area. But that's what they're applying for right now, so they're waiting for pedal dollars for that big project if that happens.
So a follow-up question to Mario project is, how will the flooding affect the underpass project? How will flooding?
I don't know, it's an area of floods, I don't know.
Yes, um, that's an interesting question. So I don't know that I have an answer, I think that would be a city question, how will flooding? But I will show you, um, because I grew up in that area. So when it floods, you'll notice the bars go down and they say it's all across. That used to happen, someone actually did that crossing. When I was a kid, it would flood, um, yeah. And they, so bars come down. One thing that I, I, really? So the only way the bars come down, and this was a couple of years ago, so I'll probably need to check my calendars, because I found the city to ask. Is when someone calls in to say, hey, it looks like it's flooding, and they put down the bar. So that's requiring me to call in to drop the bar. In my mind, I feel like there should be a sensor with something that puts it in the threshold, it's for, it's like, oh, that. It comes down, uh, I don't know, road track, you know? But that's what I heard, is someone that called it, it was a sensor. That's what I know.
Thank you all so much for being here today. I hope you can enjoy the work part of it. The lounge is ready, so if you want to go down that hallway, it is about, I think, very good.